Yeah.
This is how you can.
I saw this.
Yeah, I got one.
You want it?
Huh?
We're live, it's not a special dollars.
So then they just started working at it.
So they probably have two more. Two more, we probably got it.
Just the city.
Yes.
And can't you see part for a health or something to write?
No, it doesn't keep coming.
Call it.
Nah, nah, nah.
Not the same.
Different, yeah. Yeah.
They show us our wish.
Yeah.
Hello.
That's what happened, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I've heard that.
It's right back.
You said the energy.
Set of award.
Yeah. Well, they were, they were really.
I don't know.
Very little. Got that out first and money and she got sixty five million. Yes, the family's age.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Well, retired. It's worse than going on a big street.
We just went down the.
We didn't visit the rest of them.
The right other corner with the red light.
So.
This is a brand new.
Yeah, they had all my things.
General, I also.
I thought.
He didn't know, he was.
It was all about.
So lots of public.
It's a.
There's one from the tar pit.
They had a good sign.
It would be done by.
I want.
So.
See, just.
Yeah.
My wife knew we were wrong, so she said, what's your favorite number?
One.
And then she goes, oh, no. Emmy is twenty eight and eleven.
There you go.
Sixteen.
Sixty four.
Okay, but so.
Yeah.
No.
One more.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I want the guy.
That's a lot of credit. And he.
And five guys. You're saying he, that's a lot.
I can't work.
And it's weird that there were like five guys playing.
And covering all those three or four numbers.
Yeah.
All we get on there is. He's like, okay. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September seventh. Hamlet. We'd like at this time to tell everyone the exits are out the door, all the way down the hallway to the right. Closest ones to your left, down the stairs. There's an A D here that can be used if needed. At this time, please turn off.
Loth.
Here.
Dave Martin.
Here.
Chris Slater.
Here.
Mark Bellstein.
Here.
James Nesbit.
Here.
Steve Hitner.
Yep. Okay, very good. Has everybody had a chance to look at the Monday, August second, twenty twenty one meeting minutes? And has there been any additions, additions, deletions, or corrections for tonight?
Is the motion approved for this?
Second.
Move the second and hold the votes.
Linda Giroux.
Yes.
Steve Loth.
Yep.
Dave Martin.
Yes.
Chris Slater.
Stan.
Mark Bellstein.
Yes.
James Nesbit.
Yes.
Steve Hitner.
Yes.
Okay. First item on the agenda is what we're gonna call moving an original scoping session for seventeen sixty four. And the proper address is Walker Lake Ontario Road. Not Lake Ontario Road. Okay, um, is somebody here to represent? Please stand up, state your name, and uh. We'll get going.
Hi, I'm Charlie Brainerd. I'm the project manager for the project at Lake Ontario, Walker Lake Ontario.
Okay, um, we figured we'd get you back in here to. Let's see what everybody's up to. On July second, a letter was penned and sent out to you from our engineer, J P Shep. Okay, and to this date, I don't believe we've had any. New response or. Any type of updates uh heard that. So that being said, we, we also um. Went out and a couple of members of the board and a member of the conservation board, we went out and did a fit of property. So I guess before we get into looking at the full environmental assessment form, okay. I'd like to go over the eight items in our engineer's letter.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have the ability to respond?
Yes.
Okay, JP, would you like to? Run through the show briefly or?
Sure.
I don't wanna paraphrase anything.
No, that's fine. I'm, I'll paraphrase. Um, okay, so my first comment was uh. That the application says it represented thirty percent civil design. So I didn't go into a full complete review. Not to waste my efforts or or the developers' efforts with comments that were clearly not hundred percent right. So that's my just preface to all, all the remaining comments. Um, at that time, I only had half side sized drawings, which are difficult for review. Since that time, I do have both sides.
Okay.
So, so that helps. On the plans, there was only buffers proposed along the west side of the proposed development. Additional buffers shouldn't be considered. It's, it's not unusual to request a visual impact analysis to be provided to determine the impact of, you know, the visual impacts. This is particularly pretty good site in terms of visual impacts. Uh, it just naturally, it's off the road fairly far and there's some natural buffers to the north and south. But it wouldn't be an unusual request to ask for either a faux simulation or rendering something along those lines. So you can get a feel. But if you visit at the site, you can probably get a pretty good feel for how things are. Uh, as we move forward, we're gonna need the near state office of. Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation No Effect Letter. So you can make a determination for secret and complete the stormwater pollution prevention plan review. Uh, there, there's a proposed driveway entrance that is a state road and we recommend that uh. That the front portion be paved instead of just an ordinary construction entrance. There's a lot of construction activity for these projects for the first eight, ten, twelve months. And just to grab one entrance is difficult to clean and maintain. We found it, it's better to have that paved for ease of cleaning and keeping the, the main roadway clean. As well as preventing damage to the roadway entrance. And as noted, we need, they'll need to receive the municipal DOT approval on the driveway entrance. Uh, and along those same lines, Walker Lake Ontario Road is, is a state road now location, so that should be noted on the plans. Uh, address of existing and neighboring properties should be included on the plans, just for clarity and for communication purposes. On the drawings, uh, drawing C one point one. Uh, water main location should be revised per Monroe County Water Authority records. There is a line that appears on the drawing that appears to be actually the water district boundary. It's about five hundred feet off the center line, which is not the water line, it's actually the district boundary. So I'm pretty sure you can get the, the county record drawings. And uh, plot that accurate. So those might.
Um. This represents a question that needs to be answered as far as your application. Application is completed this time, but we're trying to move towards it.
Okay.
So please take the, these comments right here into effect so that we can actually make them part of the application. The visual buffer analysis is for the record keeping showing that we have done. Okay. And this isn't something that's really out of the ordinary in this project. Before we keep going, I, it's Keith, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, at this property, it contains a residential, I believe, a rental hall.
Correct.
Is this gonna require a subdivision? If you have a piece of property and you have two primary uses at it, does it leave a variance?
Haven't had that discussion with Cheryl, that your subdivision might be for you to deal with that.
I agree with that. Because you can only have one primary.
We're bringing all this out in the open, so it's early in, okay? Because the process is gonna take a little while. We received some documentation from Ag and Markets for a NICE CERTA requirement. Okay. You already received those documents?
Yes, sir.
I, Keith, have you had a chance to review any of those?
From? I'm sorry.
From Ag and Markets?
Oh, I saw that, the notice.
Now. Heard Jim's kind of been here and seeing. Trying to rewrite our soliloquy, of course, but uh.
We welcome their comments.
Right, right. So we're gonna incorporate that into the application, okay? Alrighty. Let me get down through here. We're gonna go over this environmental impact statement. But if there's any other questions, I wanna get them out now, so you take some notes and you can get back to us in a timely fashion, okay?
Yes, sir.
Cheryl. Sir, are you, are you in need of anything more for the application that they should know about?
I don't have. Anything from the, whatever, whatever they provide, from the entities involved, they will supply.
So we have all the appropriate people in contact. You'll be in the lead, correct?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Linda, question? I'm curious, in reading this uh. Ag and Market statement here, it said something for the advance of public funds. This being funded by the public as well as your company?
No, sir. We're funding it.
What is it? Did you see that? I guess I don't understand that, but I, you know. I don't know if it even era for view, but it just made me curious. Well, we'll probably do some further digging into those documents as we go through.
I can tell you dealing with Ag and Markets for even just a waterline extension or sewer extension. Yeah, that same comment says. Before you can uh expend public funds, which for public water district. There, there might be grand money or things like that.
Right.
Projects like this are primarily tax credit based, so there's not public funds going into this. A water district extension, a sewer district extension, that is spending tax.
Well, that's in a backfit, yeah, so, yeah, I understand.
That's where I've seen that coming.
That's why I said well, because I've seen it before.
Yeah.
So. Alright, but we can ask, feel free to ask yourself. Oh, that's, I mean, I got an answer on it. It's all, at this point, that's all I have.
Dave? Yeah, what's the distance that you need to stay back from the lot line?
Hundred feet.
So what's the dimensions of that, that lot that you're working on?
The total lot is seventy six acres.
What's the, what's the width and what's the length? On that?
I don't have an overall line, but each. So from the north line, it looks like we're over a hundred and twenty five feet from the north line.
What's the total, what's the total width of the whole?
I don't have it labeled on there.
It's not on there? If you gotta stay back a hundred feet near, you know, it doesn't give you much for putting in solar panels.
The way that it's laid out right now, we need that setback. We see that we're over a hundred and twenty five, we have a hundred and twenty five foot setback on the north side and about a hundred and twenty feet on the south side.
And was the total width of that property? As I recall, looking at it, it's pretty narrow.
It's like six hundred feet.
I know. Yeah.
Yeah. And Keith, I like, you mind if we just like where the house partial is?
Yeah, that's just.
It's there, there's a lot, a lot north and south of that clear area around.
Alright.
Yeah, it's close to seven, it looks like seven hundred feet wide.
Okay.
Got you.
Okay, JP, quick question on the asphalt. Is that gonna be permanent? And I know we, we want it for construction, but my concern is what we're doing, we're building a parking place or a throw trash place. All asphalt up on the edge of the road. And can they just put binder in and remove it after it's in operation?
Usually, it's a state road, so usually the DOT requires any entrance onto their roadway, just within the right way, that first.
Just in the right way?
Just that first thirty feet or so off, off the road edge to be paved to protect the road edge from, you know.
So you can throw a culvert in there and?
Yeah, so you can have a culvert if needed.
And then that would be left there?
That's, they usually wanna pay. They do make exceptions for agricultural activities occasionally, but usually that proportion in the right way should be paid. Just, just to protect the road edge.
I'm thinking, where the, where the old refrigerators go to die?
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah. And I wish you protect.
Well, I think we've been trying as a, as a town to try to put some kind of hard surface in agricultural plant lease.
Using recycled rap.
Okay. Uh, because of the mud that it gets drained out and can be cleaned and cleaned off, alright? Which is, you know, endangered to some kind of some traffic and stuff. And also chewing up, and you don't want to lose that structural effect of the backstone asphalt and stone you decided. On the, on the drawing, it showed that um, there'd probably still be some agricultural activity on the site. And that there'd be access for the farmer to the back acreage. So that can be the reasons why the driveway is supposed to be in that. Location is that also gonna be the farmer's access to the back.
Yes. Yeah, they'll be able to use that. And there'll be space on both sides for them to get by as well.
That was my question in the room.
Bang, bang, sing along.
I'll come up with another one. Well, okay, yeah, so. Yeah, you have a culvert plan, we don't know what size and stuff to get into the property. Uh, but depending where the farming is gonna occur, there's a good amount of wetlands uh. And I'm assuming intermittent flowing occurring farther to the east. And I'm wondering, are you planning on doing anything for that to allow the agricultural use to occur there or?
Um.
Are you planning on having them come, the agriculture use come on the north side or the south side or?
There should be space on either side to get by.
Yeah, but from a drainage standpoint, I know they go through there today. But it might be easier if they came off the north side as well.
Right, and yet they would have access to do so.
I mean, there is a seasonal drainage trip that runs through there and affects quite a bit of acreage both sides.
Right.
So that'll be part of the more than a thirty percent workup. We'll be looking at the drainage study also.
So we did walk the site, we saw that there is a nice hedgerow along there, but it is primarily deciduous trees, so it would be fairly visible. Granted, there's not too many people looking at it now, uh, development wise, but in twenty five years, who knows what happens? So I was wondering if there's any thought or discussion about providing some built in screening in the fence itself? I think we talked about that last time as well.
Right, so we could. There's none proposed. The proposal is to use the existing vegetation, but we could look at, you know, putting a tarp on the fence or something like that that could reduce the, the visual impact. Um, we could look at other options as well.
You could try landscaping. Costs more than a tarp.
Does?
Tarp wouldn't last long.
No, no.
You could do buffering with the new apple farming technique.
Oh, yeah, there you go. But there's. Splayed fruit trees?
Yeah. I have another question. What's the longevity of those panels?
Twenty five years.
And then what, what happened to them after that?
So, uh, part of the decommissioning plan is we would come in and remove all the panels, remove all the, the work, basically put the land back to the way it was.
Are those, any parts reusable on the panels all or are they all scrap at that point?
It's all scrap, reusable.
Are, is there an articulating system?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so part of what we talked about last time too was, I know we had come in at fourteen feet and you all had said that you would prefer it under twelve feet. So part of our design would be a fixed panel system now, which would bring it under that twelve feet mark.
Okay, good. Your plans show your raise running north, south in the plans again. So you're switching from, from tracking to.
To a fixed.
Stationary.
Correct.
So the description and, and your secret description that I just looked at.
So you're gonna change the acclamation and it would be facing south?
Correct.
Talks about the panels being ten to twelve feet tall.
Right, so we had, the original proposal was for a two inch portrait, which comes to about fourteen feet.
And I'm saying in the original description.
Articulate and the energy versus and maintenance would probably pretty much.
It's a balance.
Right.
The reason why I ask, because I drive by one in Agar all the time and half, I don't articulate anymore.
So is there a glare issue?
It's very expensive from an O N M.
Is there potential for a glare issue then with this? Well, not really, because there's not too many receptors nearby, but.
No issue for glare. We did the glare study.
Is there any glare analysis on, well, you got a new design, so you haven't got. I mean, with the uh. Moving units, the sun, it reflects back up, so it's not really.
Right.
A glare issue.
We did a.
You could have a glare issue.
Yeah, we'll take a look. We did a glare issue on the tracker system and there was no impact.
Yeah, no, there wouldn't be that, but fix might have an issue, right? So we'd like to know what. How far are you? You sure we understood that? How far are you from the center line of Roosevelt Highway, Route eighteen? I think that would be the majority of the traffic going by just in the south, yeah.
So there's, there's a couple of properties.
Yeah, twenty five and a half.
Yeah, you gotta be six or seven yards. You can see it.
Yeah.
But you're looking through gaps and you're, you're not gonna see it if you're driving fast. Steve?
I have a question.
Alright, do you have any questions for us before we go into this effect statement?
No, sir, so I'll provide, so we have, and we'll take a look again based on the new design. Uh, but I, I have the no effect letter, which I can send over, so I'll respond to the comments and, and writing with all the documents. We have a lot of the documents already, so I'll send them over.
Is there any other full scale drawings available? Can you send us what you have? Do we have a full scale set?
We have just the last second. Everybody got a full size set?
Right.
Yeah.
Basically, the only visual impact really is from Roosevelt Highway, correct? Well, maybe, maybe it'll be who, they talk about visual impact study, maybe stick some twelve foot flags along the southern line of where the thing is to get a visual. Idea if it's gonna, you know, I mean, if there's gonna be any visual impact.
Okay, sure.
I have a question too. It, how do they know, who determines if they are producing or not? Like if one breaks down, who knows that, that happens?
So all of those are, we have a um. Monitoring system where they're monitored twenty four seven. So if something happens to the panels, we'll get an alert and we'll know and we'll send somebody out to fix them.
Will there be a local um maintenance?
Yes. Yeah, we'll hire somebody locally to help do the maintenance. Yeah, we'll, we'll have a full O N M plan put to, put forth, yeah.
Okay, um, I wanna get through this full environmental assessment form so we can try to get this application going towards. Let's take a hard look at it. As was said in the beginning, it's Walker Lake Ontario Road, so it's gonna be corrected. We're at page two. Government approvals, there's no funding, right?
Correct.
Or sponsorship. City, town, or village planning board in commission, yes, site plan approval, special permit. Blood plane development permit. Is there anything else they're gonna need for this?
Not, let's say for sub takes.
Subdivision. Are we gonna be able to have some clarity to that question?
I think the answer is yes. That's required.
Okay.
I wanted feedback from Cheryl.
Okay. So that'll need to be changed a little with subdivision approval.
Okay. Just one question on the subdivision, does, will the hundred foot setback apply for like the access road portion?
I think, yeah, I think with our other. One on Roosevelt Highway, didn't we have like four hundred feet on one side? Didn't we have a sub take of that? Do you remember? Can we measure it? Do you remember? Was it going towards the south? I don't remember. I don't remember. I don't know why.
There was a, there was a large setback to it for.
It was a large setback.
It was nineteen acres. It was uh, it was fifty nine acres, was the whole project, which thirty seven acres. And it's points in there. It was the solar fire, it was eighteen, or nineteen point four. Which allows some agrum, activity to become some of the buffering screening, so.
Working really well right now.
Yeah. Going to harvest it.
Kind of harvested, yeah.
Okay, uh, there's no zoning change required at this time, because we haven't thought about any more now. Other local agencies. Of course, we'll probably refer site plan once we decide then which way we're going with secret. Monroe County Plan Board approval should be something that we concurrent with our. Approval process. Is it within five hundred feet of the state road? I don't think it's within five hundred foot. Well, that two sixty is the state road, yeah. Is it within five hundred feet of two sixty?
Nothing actual raised.
Pardon?
Nothing raised.
No, it's more than five hundred feet back.
I thought the requirement from Monroe County was five hundred feet. I believe it's probably more than five hundred feet back.
It's definitely.
Way back behind that lot, past the first rated swell. Yeah, so I don't think they need Monroe County site plan or.
Oh, yeah.
Monroe County.
I mean, you could argue that depending on how they subdivided the driveway access will be on the, on the state road.
True, the driveway access does need, the, the access point itself needs approval from Monroe County.
Or actually, and the state.
Because they.
State road.
Yeah.
Uh, regional agencies, it kicks in near state. That's a yes.
Yeah, and I need the driveway access.
So they need to be corrected. So that needs to be corrected. Speedy's a yes. Coordinations with federal agencies for wetland impacts, there is a wetland on his property. So that's a yes. Coastal resources, that's a no. We do have an LWRP, yes. And a coastal ruin handling, no. Okay. Planning and zoning actions will administrative or legislative adoption or amendment of plan, local law, whether it's rule or regulation. This has to be granted. We're planning and zoning actions, we're gonna be taking an action, shouldn't that be a yes?
A zoning change usually means a zoning amendment or resign.
All righty, adopted land use plans. We have land use plan for that area, it's agribusiness. Considered, yes. Does the plan include specific recommendations for a site with proposed action would be located? That would be per our soil and law.
Yeah.
Okay, New York State heritage areas, Western area canal corridor, no brownfields or anything else like that? Should that be a yes or no? Or is that just considered where in that corridor? Sorry, where are you?
He's on C point two, point B.
Oh, thank you.
Page two.
It was tedious, but I wanna just do this one time only and get it straight. It showed up on the mapping?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, here's proposed action wholly or personally within the area listed in adopted municipal open space plan or firm land protection plan. That's something that came through all through the markets, it's one of the reasons why the questions are here. And it's part of the county plan for nineteen ninety-nine, that's a yes. You might wanna refer to that. Are we going any further with what we're doing locally?
Yes, we got a meeting tomorrow night.
All right, zoning, residential, very low density, yes. This use is permitted or allowed by special or condemned, yes. Zoning change request, no. School district is Hilton. Police, Monroe County Sheriff, yeah, yeah. Walker Fire Station, Hilton Fire Department, Hamlin Fire District. What parks serve the project sites? Scout, Village Park, Salmon Creek Park, Palmer Towne Park. We have our parks, that's not just Scout Park, right? And also, you got Hamlin Beach. So that should be a Hamlin Beach State Park. Proposed potential development, seventy-six acres total, physically disturbance twenty-six. And project site, you can hear its properties, it's the seventy-six. Is a proposed action an expansion of the existing project or use? No. Is a proposed action a subdivision, or does it include a subdivision? That should be yes. Okay. None of this cluster, I think. Will this be done in multiple phases? No new residential uses? Does proposed action include a non-residential construction? Yes. Total number of structures, the attachments, height and width should be noted as required. So, so you get twelve foot. And there'll be another design detail showing a fixed array, correct?
Correct.
Okay, does proposed action include construction or other activities that result in involvement of any liquid, such as creation of water supply, reservoir, pump, break, waste lagoon? Escavation, mining, or dredging during construction? You're not gonna be altering that drainage at all, right?
No, sir.
Now, the bottom, under B two, B, project. Would proposed action cause a result, alteration, increase, and decrease size when encroaching into any existing wetland, water body, shoreline, beach, or adjacent area? It is gonna be encroaching.
There's no impact to the wetland.
Yeah, but there's gonna be a delineation, and there's gonna be some, I mean, you checked yes here.
Okay.
Is there any mitigation required? JP? Are you in no way out of this?
I don't see any delineation of the plant.
There was, there is, I think, an attachment to the secret piece here has delineation. Further back, JP?
I don't have a secret document.
Oh, you don't have a video, okay.
Hey, Chris.
The only guy's got it.
The question you had in that previous excavation, wouldn't that be for the driveways?
This is part of an ongoing operation.
Yeah.
Not the actual construction.
In the wetlands, delineated, but I'm seeing they're well behind the proposed development of the arrays.
Right, yeah, they're to the very east of the property.
How much is being encroached, found, or disturbed?
There's no disturbance to any wetlands, we're staying out of the wetlands. Part of the southeast part of the panel, we have, I believe, coming within fifty feet of one of the wetlands at the... There's a wetland on the south part of the property. That part of the panels, they're coming within, I believe, fifty feet.
Do you think none of this area is part of the LWRP as far as those seasonal drainage areas, or is there an active blue line going through their property?
There's no blue line, there's no anything on the property.
All right. So this should be no?
Yeah, they're showing three delineations, so none are within the area of the arrays or the driveways.
I think the answer's yes, because it is an encroachment into adjacent area. It's all...
Well, the federal wetlands don't define an adjacent area.
Okay.
The state wetlands...
It's a state, okay.
The state wetlands define a hundred-foot adjacent area.
So this could be no then, okay.
All right. Will proposed action cause a disturbance to the bottom sediments? No. Removal of Atlantic vegetation? No known demand for water? Go right down to proposed action generate liquid wastes? No sores, waste wire sewage. Will proposed action disturb more than one acre and create stormwater runoff, either from a new point source, stitches, pipes, wells, curves, gutters, and other constrictor flows? Yes, and you're gonna cover that all in the drainage study?
Yes, sir.
That we'll be reviewing. Will stormwater runoff flow to adjacent properties? It flows through the property now. Are we gonna have additional runoff from fixed panels?
The DEC's consensus is that solar rays are actually an improvement over agricultural activities, because they're vegetated underneath. They're not altering the drainage patterns. So generally, the DEC is only requiring stormwater management for impervious surfaces.
Impervious surfaces.
And if their driveways are gravel primarily, and their pads and those kinds of things are impervious or largely pervious.
Okay, very good. Does proposed action include, will we use that site, one more source of air emissions including fuel, combustion waste, any processes or operations? Maintenance vehicles? You're gonna have power generation, structural heating, bench plant pressures? None. Grass cutting? All righty. Air emission, federal clean area, really not gonna have it. All right, seven of thirteen, we're going. Will proposed action generate or emit methane? No. Air pollution? No. Traffic? Yes. Random, between the hours seven AM and seven PM. But only during construction, delivery materials and stuff. Parking applicable. Okay, there's not gonna be a hybrid electric plug-in site, huh? No pedestrian bicycle accommodations? None of this stuff really pertains? Will proposed action for commercial or industrial projects only generate new or additional demand for energy? Not really. Okay, hours of operation? It's twenty-four seven? Twenty-four seven. Is there gonna be any security lighting in sight?
A lot of times, there'll be, maybe a motion sensor light or something, a transformer pad, but nothing that's on permanently.
Okay, proposed action will produce noise, bam bam bam. Okay. Point-two acres of trees to be removed, however, additional vegetation screen being required. Look at the attachments, are required, any who need to. No bulk storage of petroleum or anything for any construction vehicles? Pesticides, herbicides during construction and operation? No pesticide use? Okay, we buy through permitted actions if you have to use it?
Correct.
Okay, you really don't wanna kill our bees, okay? We wanna maintain a good food base for them? Are you gonna have an integrated pest management portion in your implication, or is there one other than what federal standard requires?
I don't believe, just the files.
Yeah, I'll see attachments here. Suppose there'll be no solid waste? Okay, nine of thirteen, does proposed action, no modification of a waste management facility? No disposal or storage of hazardous waste? There's no proposal to put a battery pack on this site?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll hold you to that. Then we have the land uses surrounding the project, forest, agribusiness, residential ruin, and farm. Looks like a pretty decent progression of acreage, is you start, finish, and change. Nothing real significant. Is this project used by members of the community for public recreation? Are there snowmobile trails through there?
No, sir.
Anybody know?
No.
There is.
In the back.
Okay, you might wanna, there's a local organization that can show you the mapping. Do we have one for snowmobile trails?
No.
Cause they cross Roosevelt Bridge, and it cuts, it stays closer to Roosevelt all the way down, back to home, stays closer to the road, and then goes up to Petter's.
What about the, what about that leg that goes to the north, crosses it?
It crosses one field, it crosses the first field, then gets into the second, then goes across it.
And comes back over to Petter's? So it's still not in this piece?
Not that I know of, unless there's another...
But you've got local people that use it.
True. Anyways, you just might wanna verify that it isn't part of a new site coming on board or one that's being used. Or it's no flyers or chaps or your friends.
Yeah. It could be pretty traumatic.
D, there's no facilities serving the children, the elderly, and schools, households, and whatever. We have no dams on the site, so there's no beavers? No solid waste management facility required, about that. Is there any contaminated areas of record over there? Anybody know? I didn't see it on our map. All right, eleven of thirteen, we're almost there. Yeah, right, right, that happens. There's no institutional limiting property, control limiting property uses, no. Bedrock, no outcrafting, that is site's pretty flat. And it's consistent with the soil's map. Check that. Drainage, project soils that moderately well drain, but poorly drained in some spots, as we saw a finger out there. No geologic features in project site that we know of. Surface water features, all these are checked, yes. Seasonal stream, eight-four-seven-six-one-seven. HN five, yes. Water quality impaired on the listing. Is this a designated floodway? No, but it is in, under your floodplain. Part of the drainage study will identify if there's any issues that are holding bad water, which are taken on site. Renowned wildlife species, Americans, Canada geese, red-tailed hawk, bald eagles?
Yep.
You can add that to it. We have heard a few nesting prayers in Hamlin at this time. And run all the way along the White Fore. The American toad, eastern gray squirrel, don't forget the red squirrel. Whitetail bear, garter snake, woodchucks, also coyote. All right, does the project say that significant natural community, inhabitant? No, not really, except for the geese and stager all here, I guess. Does the site contain any species of plant or animals listed by the... Does the site contain any species of plant or animals listed by the federal government is endangered? Yes, what is it?
Tasteful.
No, that's not. No, just for revitalization, holding soil regeneration. Does project site are joining early queues for hunting, trapping, fishing, or shell fishing? Well, probably not fishing or shell fishing, but probably is used for some, some deer hunting and stuff which is down here, but not confirmed, which might be a yes. Ballistic gel on the fences. Designated agricultural district, yes, and it's identified. Soil survey is identified. No natural landmarks, biological community, or geological feature that we know of over there. An old schoolhouse or lighthouse or anything there.
Indian burial ground.
Indian burial ground, yeah. Their local scenic or aesthetic resource. You got scalp park and natural preserves. How far away is the state park?
A lot more than five, you know? Maybe more than five.
More than five.
You're less than five miles from Lake Ontario.
Yeah, I was gonna say Lake Ontario's less than five. Yeah, and the Parkway, and that becomes a linear park, so Lake Ontario State Parkway.
Thousand nineteen, a little bit closer.
Don't hold your, I mean, hold your breath because it'll probably come back and will, you know.
How far is Hilton from this project? That's why they listed village park.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, Hilton?
Uh, be four or five miles.
It's not a highway. Next road over.
Next road over.
Yeah, yeah.
It's six point eight miles to the village park.
Oh, have a decision making session, hope we wind you in early, Ed. Okay?
Yeah, I appreciate it.
That would be Cheryl's obligation to send out. There's a subdivision, would you need the subdivision?
Can you do a, I would do them at the same time.
You would, okay.
Okay. That sounds good, so one.
Twelve copies of the updated forms.
Twelve copy and then one copy of the full.
Yes.
Okay.
If we're going to circulate copies to the other involved agencies, there has to be a complete set of everything for each of those.
Oh, yes.
Do you want those printed out, or can those be electronic?
Are you?
I think Monroe County Department of Plant and Development is all online now.
Yeah, all electronic.
What about D O T and everybody else?
I don't think they are.
Okay, I'll get back to you, I'll tomorrow, how's that sound?
Perfect.
Okay, I'll email your text.
Okay.
Monroe County will let you know if they wanna pay for formal mail based on the size of the project. I don't know, the case that's left on my Chromebook, we'll take all that. Now we sit here all night long watching these things go through. Well, we thank you for coming.
Yes, I appreciate it.
I hope it was constructive for you folks.
Yes.
And we'll see where we go from here.
Okay, sounds good, I appreciate it, thank you all very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
We got a couple other things we wanted to discuss. Sandy Creek marina. I notice they've been maintaining their product rather well.
Yeah, it has been mowed, yes.
Has there been any other movement from the owner wanting to?
No contact, I think he's waiting for all the approvals for all the documentation I gave the board before it comes in, that's what I'm assuming.
Cause we saw, we saw the mining and dredging permit. Alright, and that in itself probably would need some kind of okay from the L W R P, I would think. And that would be consistent with the report. So if that's been approved or it's in, you know, in process and we hear anything bad from that, we might need to schedule that as one of our meetings. He's getting fairly close to a year, isn't he?
He's all right here. But I'll check on that for you.
Well, I would think.
He's pretty close or just at the hust of it.
Because of COVID, and the fact that a lot of state agencies and federal agencies work from home, I would have a problem if we notified him that he might need to extend his application.
I thought when he.
He's done.
He was done.
He's done.
He said he was done, he was gonna start over, gonna get an engineer.
So we get to do a whole new application.
Good drawings.
Yeah, the documents I had are dated from December.
Yeah, twenty twenty, he's done.
So we're not to a year yet. But we, I think we put him in more clearly, he needs an engineer plan, get rid of everything.
Well, don't you think he would, what goes in my mind, wouldn't you think he's got an engineer someplace that'd be doing cuts and fills and engineering and they're gonna look at that? It's part of that.
I would, I would think, you know, the fact that it went to Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah.
They were gonna need engineer drawings, but I, I've asked.
How do we find out?
Well, I mean, you have to grant them approval for the site improvements, I mean, you're gonna see them eventually.
I mean, he's gonna have to make a whole new application, by the way it looks, and then we'll know at that point. And then he'll provide all this information, I just gave you guys all this information just so you're aware that he's starting again and that we could be maybe on top of things when he comes in.
Yeah, well, at the very least, we might have to you know, if he's got the plan that we need, we'll need to give him an L W R P okay for the dredging portion only.
Well, I mean, the ball's in his court, we've given him, we've told him numerous times, we need an engineer in set plan. Not, you know, these sketches and notes privately, he certainly can't get, get that dredging and all those, those earth piers out without engineer drawings. I think that, just as a just a man of opinion, everyone drives by that and says, boy, sure would be nice to see that running again and splooshed up. But he's gotta do it right.
Maybe it's open up for us to finalize your L W R P and he can get a grant. Be great.
All we had to do, it has to go before the, it already has gone before the conservation board. And they have basically said, yes, we need this, we agree with the project.
Right, I'm just saying that we'll probably have to do maybe two conservation quarter permits, one for the dredging and whatever this state approves, and then for the actual marine itself, making sure that's consistent with it, so.
When he was first in here, he wasn't talking about dredging or removing land, the red flag for me, when he got this in the mail, was where's that fourteen hundred yards going? And where's stormwater management? You know, where are we gonna put it, and that being the nine in the sandstone, wherever comes out there is gonna be red. When they first dug that, the crit was red for a long time. Cause it's a, I don't even know what they call it now, but it sucks it right out the channel, the crit. It's the same, same as when you're draining your, your water bed or something.
Ventura?
Ventura, yeah, yeah, same thing, yeah. There was, there was a guy in the sandstone going out in the lake. Almost looked like the Genesee River a couple days ago.
Well, living on that area of water, we see the Red Creek go at that. It only, it's like Wednesday before the water gets clear, you're gonna see it tomorrow after thunder and rain starts to happen. I also just wanted to interject a little, what's, everybody's been seeing some changes up at our famous quarter. Okay, and I mean, at least the place is painted and looks nice. But at nights and weekends when there's Cheryl's not here. Okay, we see a lot of different activity there. Kids running around in the park and that, carriage being pulled in and out. And hesitant resident concerns.
Correct.
People who live there.
I'd like to know why they have curtains up now.
Yep.
Cause he wants to put in a waiting room.
He what?
To put in a waiting room.
Is business so busy?
No, he's hoping to get
The federal approval.
Dispensary license.
Dispensary license.
I estimate, like, what's up, what's going on in there, oh, I had to have a waiting room. Dispensary license, and he's been before the zoning board of appeals to for them to okay the content of the signs, of the sign he wants to put up, and today it moves a deadline, he didn't make it. Neither did the owner, Y S, for permission to go on the property to make some measurements, take measurements for the Z B A. No, no response, so they will not be announced in September, they will be back for public hearing in October, they did not meet the deadline. And I have all the emails from him stating when all that was put together, so.
Well, are you gonna give any judgment if he won't let you on the property?
Might have to call the sheriffs. I don't want to do that. But the side, the content of the signs, the signs that he has provided, say dispensary, say marijuana, and that's you can't do that, he's not dispensing, can't sell.
Would the dispensary be state or would it be federal? It would be state, because they're under the state. I would think it would be state, yeah, as far as I'm aware, it's still a violation of federal law. But I would think if the state before they would issue dispensary implication, they would talk to the town that they were issuing first.
Is the town opted in or out on the marijuana law?
Not yet, we haven't made a decision yet. He was at the last public forum, I guess. He stated that.
See, you're, what they're doing where I, where I work, they're gonna opt in, but they're going to force it only into one very small corner in an office park, and that's where it allows them to still say they opted in, but basically keep it out of ninety-eight percent of the municipality.
So miniature overlay district?
The problem, too, is with the change in state leadership, there's been no commission set up to oversee any of this yet.
Right.
So.
I thought it was still like two years on, too, before they're, you know, you're actually going to be getting like a dispensary license or anything.
Well, we have till the end of the year to make a decision.
Yeah, opt in or out.
But there's, nobody knows what the who's gonna oversee this stuff.
Right, now, I've heard two stories, that if you opt out, you can't opt back in, and then I've heard if you opt out, you can opt back in later, you know?
The second one, I think.
If you opt out, we can opt in later.
But you opt in.
But you can't, if you opt in, you can't.
Opt out later.
That's the way I understand it.
And what does, what does opting out do for us?
It won't, so you can't have a dispensary retail market, there's two things on the, on the books. And it's a dispensary retail sale or a onsite consumption, like a smoke lamp. And you've gotta opt in of both of those, opt in or opt out.
So you say stay away from it.
Yeah, it's a round play.
That'd be my.
That's the general consensus, right?
Come on, Hamlin Hooker has a ring to it.
Not me, or doesn't matter to me.
Ian, you didn't just say that, did you?
Keith, I wanna put that aside, I know you talked to Mr. Olson, painting the solar panels in Clarkson. And I probably have a little much wine drinking, but times, before we go home tonight, could you tell us what's going on, that sounds like a pretty good program they have in Clarkson for Hamlin. But I know, I don't think he's done yet.
Well, some of the concerns with this corner, okay, not only Cheryl's not had the ability to go there, but neither is a part of Marshall. And yes, he said in his deck in February of twenty twenty, his testimony said that he likes to paint. Okay, and he would use space for the storage of his own vehicles to work at. Now, unless he owns about thirty different cars, okay? I'm not, I'm not seeing where it says friends. Where his friends.
That wasn't, that was not part of that.
Wouldn't you just ask, ask them the registrations on his cars, cause they would have to be in his name.
Well, the problem is, he's uncooperative, he doesn't show up, and when he does show up, if he's not in court for something else. Alright, and I probably shouldn't say that, but he's he's not forthcoming, the owner of the property feels he's being targeted by COVID compliance. Alright, so you've got these two storms working together, and the only people that are suffering for it is not our unsightlyness that we're going by, because that's a judgment call, and I guess we can't use that as criteria. But there's existing people living in that attached building, okay? That even if they don't wanna be identified, are being affected by this. Alright, and to be true to our residents, something's gotta be done one way or the other. Either, you can't have a commercial paint shop, we didn't look at a wire cabinet, we haven't looked at disposal. You know, it's a lot different than spraying with a can like he was doing on a mat of tea to begin with, he was doing it outside, he was just doing restful and stuff. Now, they're doing full body feathers, boots. And I thought there's very strict regulations as far as control and fire control. Right. For a paint, you're supposed to have same or paint.
Oops.
Yes.
Absolutely.
But just cause he made this testimony, we did not give him permission to, to do that.
More, more to the point, it wasn't part of his application, he didn't ask for it. So it can't be implied in this permit. He was asking for a vape shop, grocery or whatever he's calling it.
You know, I also, you know, it's tough to deny a property owner from renting out his property, but he has to do it in a fashion that's concurrent with our local regulations and other fire regulations.
Fire marshal is aware of the painting, making plans to move forward to get into the building. I mean, there's been a fire door that he's been asking for, I think, for close to twelve months.
Since it opened.
Yeah, and it has not been, not been completed.
You can't paint unless, I mean, you're just a little window fan or something else like that with the door open.
He just painted one car.
It's different than doing a touch-up, you know, and fixing a little spot like that or something on your own car, you know, and putting undercoating on it with a can, you know, this is serious. No, he full body painted the one car he had out there, the Mercedes.
It's green.
Yeah.
I think the big concern is the liability, the town has a liability because we're not enforcing the code. And, you know, if a fire marshal can't get in there, you gotta bring up a bustle of sheriffs. And get in the place.
It's a fire marshal issue.
You should have already had him in court. You shouldn't have already had him in court.
We've had him in court, years.
But he gets away with it yet.
Well, if our marshal can shut Well, if our marshal can shut a site down, it's okay.
He's aware of that.
All right? We didn't give him approval for doing a, you know, curbing that's... I mean, even though the property's always been a garage, it has not been used to paint whole cars, patty and featherwork. Okay? When they have a problem, somebody came in there and they just wanted to do an oil change or two, and that was something that weren't, and any hazardous waste would be taken care of, or, uh... You know, a transmission shaft or something like that, that's not affecting the other residents of that, that building.
But he would still need a site plan to do that work, even though the building has been used for that in the past. He would have to get permission, get a site plan approval.
Yeah, and he sorta handed it one time, but it was for the vape shop, not for this.
No, that's right.
Then it's not for other repairs either.
No, it wasn't for other repairs.
There was just a comment he made, because like he stated, it wasn't on the application. It was just a question that...
I asked.
What you asked, yes.
When I was driving.
Right.
You can't planning board and the, um...
And a rubber bake panel, no cars in the front.
Go away from together, because they came to that.
And I don't know, I can't just speak.
Cars in front every day.
Well, the only way you can enforce it is once again is with firelight, safety with approved site plan. Uh, unless it becomes a municipal park or something. So, um...
What, he's not a special use permit? Wasn't that...
No.
No, I don't think he was.
He was not commercial, he wasn't a question.
He's not a special use permit.
Yeah, we didn't give him a special use permit, yeah, no. We did, then it could be revoked.
Right, he should have.
But fire marshal's looking at it.
Well, it's just a heck of a, like Jim says, it's a heck of a liability for those people that live there.
But, you know, they have called, I have meetings and phone numbers, but they don't want to come forward. They don't want to come forward. Because they talked to me, and then when I sent them to the fire marshal, they hold, they hold to me a change.
And, and his crew are intimidating.
I think the landlord, the owner of the building ought to take a little more interest in this.
We can't speak on that.
He's, he's part of the problem.
Well, then shut them down.
Be the fire marshal. Yeah, I, the only pool we have is for the vape shop. If there's anything going on, that would be...
You have no, you have no teeth to shut it down.
Okay. Jim, you have a question? Something to do with wine?
I tried to, trying to...
Something to do about wine?
Explain, explain that in a hundred words or less.
So, I spoke to the attorney for the town of Clarkson, to see what they were doing with the solar panels and the taxes. Incentive zoning and that kind of thing. Uh, what he told me was they're not doing incentive zoning so much as they're doing, uh, this, uh, these tax agreements where they get a chunk of the money upfront. They belong to some. So front loading it, so there's the money, and then they can do something with it. I haven't reviewed the particular agreement, so I can't speak to the specifics beyond that.
I can tell you they do, any solar is subject to an overlay district. So, the town board can decide, this is a good site, this is not a good site. And will allow it in, an overlay district to be formed, and there's some criteria, size of the parcel, zoning of the parcel, things that... So they only allow the solar now in places where the town board chooses to allow a overlay district. And part of that is some financial negotiations.
The, uh, and, and that's correct, and we touched on this, uh, the last time this came up. The overlay district approach gives you more leverage, so you can cut better deals, that's basically it. Whereas, and, and without the overlay district, it's presumptively permitted use, so they're halfway through the door. So, it, but the overlay district holds back the zoning, it keeps it in the town's back pocket.
So I got another question that goes along with that, Ben. If you decide on an overlay district, and I can see where this goes hand in hand with your farmland preservation to a certain extent, based on good soil, bad soil, or it could be traffic, it could be a whole bunch of different things, all right? If a proposed solar facility comes in and they're using less than fifty percent of the parcel, so the majority of the parcel's still being used as agribusiness, would the property owner still get the tax relief? Okay? Because the majority of his property, okay, would be in agribusiness. Therefore, letting it, the ability for the, for the town, village, or city to tax the remaining parcel out of industrial.
I think you're mixing two pieces.
Right, but you lose your...
The agricultural...
You lose your egg exemption.
Or, or part of your egg exemption.
Part of your egg exemption.
So if you have a, if you have a hundred acre parcel, and suddenly water's available on the road or something, and you decided to parcel out, uh, uh, four ten acre lots in the front, and so you got the remaining sixty acres, I think those would come off the egg exemption, and the remaining sixty would continue, and I think it would be the same idea. So you have fifty percent becomes solar, industrial, commercial, what, what have you, and the remainder would remain...
You'd have to sub it, but I don't want to do that, would you?
Question I don't know, I don't know the answer.
I'm just trying to preserve the amount of good farmland, if you're going to design an overlay district for that, which is a good idea, to do it that way, show parcels where you can, then the town would want to know based on what their agricommunity says, which area is good for it, which area is bad. They mark, says everything down the other side, the little red, red clay is junk, we don't like it.
Well, that's where you want to put the solar.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, then, uh, yeah, if we're, we're working on this farmland protection plan, would that give us any teeth in, in, into something that's coming up here now, or, or how much time would we have to, to get something on the books, so that we could say, this is where we want to have this solar array to go? We don't want it in an agricultural area, we want it in another area.
So, I, I, I don't even know if this is a legal question or not, but it, it, it becomes a property owner has property rights. And if they choose, if a farmer says, I'm nearing retirement, and I'm, I'm done farming this land, and I can't get anyone to give me good money for it, and the solar developer does, and they're going to make that choice based on, on economics, not, and their property owner likes rather than something along those lines.
I, I would add, yeah, I would anticipate, you know, if a farmer's making more money by leasing it out rather than farming it, he's going to lease it out no matter how good the soil is. So, we, we step in, if, if protecting soils and keeping good soils in production is important to the town as a whole, then you want to separate those out from, you know, parcels like solar panels. If that's, if that's something the town wants to do.
Well, it already is, and this is, in the comprehensive master plan, that granted it's old, two, two thousand seven, there's a goal, land use, that preserves areas of natural beauty, open space, encourages a continuation of productive farmland and other agricultural uses, it's already in our master plan. So does that currently give the planning board the teeth to turn it down?
No. The comprehensive plan is a, means a broad brush, it's goal oriented, it gives you the, the grand theory. But you're still stuck with whatever zone you have on the books. And so over time, what happens is, you know, let's say you spend a bucket of money to hire a consultant to do a brand new comprehensive plan this week. It, it tells you all the goals you want to do, but then you have to go bit by bit by implementing, and then oftentimes towns change their mind halfway through the process.
Right, and you would have to take your zoning map that calls this R V L, you know, rural, very low density, that's... And then parcel that into this is better soils, and this is worse soils, and say, okay, these are L V, uh, R V L prime, not, you can't do that here. And this is R V L that's moderate or...
Marginal.
Marginal, and then you can do some, you can do something other. But, that's in the zoning code, and right now...
You can't even read that, man. A little hole in there, a little hole over here.
But, but that's it, I mean, your, your zoning control would control, and right now it doesn't.
And, and if you had to assess all the soils, that, you know, that's, that's a project. Was it a county land survey, was it the sixties or something like that? You know, it would just be easier to simply say, we don't have that many of these projects that come along, I think, not a ton of them, so if you have internal standards you want to follow, you can just basically say, okay, look at the R V L, but we've got these other concerns. If you make the other concerns great, and if they don't, go away.
Right, but you could, you can't do with the pre-land zoning, yes.
So, just trying to encourage, as we're going through the farmland preservation, some tools to look at what we need to have to help preserve what we have as our major business. And if you go into a marginal, it has to be proven that you have some marginal soils, and the only way you're not telling the landowner he can have it, okay? Except for if he's in a very well drained, very good soil area and stuff like that, you wouldn't want it there. And that's what you're saying, okay? You need to start with the farmland preservation, that's what the whole thing's about. So, if you can get everybody to agree about what is good and what is bad, it's kind of, it's kind of tough, but... I could, I can see this thing going a little further, and especially with storage facilities, that's going to be the next thing that's coming up. Believe me, you don't want down here.
Do you have King coming, you know?
Yeah.
Bill?
Okay.
He's going to bring a fellow from Ontario County with him, that's got a lot of experience in setting up the farm protection plan. And Jackie Smith will also be here.
Okay, uh...
I got one.
Go ahead.
I got one question for you, on the proposal on the Walker Lake Ontario Road. And he said the, the, um, distance from the north boundary is a hundred and twenty-five feet. Where does that, where is that measured from? So, is it a hundred and twenty-five feet if they put a fence around it, or is it a hundred and twenty-five feet if they have to put evergreen trees or some kind of landscape?
It's to the fence, that's my knowledge.
To the fence, it's worth a plan show.
So to that lot line, I'm guessing, whatever that parcel, lot line. Bobby has the fence line somewhere near.
I just wondered, you know, like, there's a hedgerow there where you say it's, it's a natural buffer, but if the hedgerow is eighty feet out from the lot line, and then he's going to put a buffer in or something with a fence, it may not leave room for a farmer to bring equipment down to work to let...
It's definitely tight on the north side, that's why I, where I said, what's...
It's just something to...
A hundred feet is not going to hardly pay to go in there.
Right.
You can hardly turn a rig around.
Right, and it, you know, by the time you get a hedgerow pushed out and...
Yeah.
The hundred and twenty-five feet all of a sudden gets down to twenty.
Right, you need to make sure it's...
And then the farmer's going to cut the hedgerow off so he can get bigger equipment down through there, and then now you have no, now you have no barrier. Now you have no natural. It's just...
There's, there's not a lot of really good looking farmland to the east of where the field's going to go, or the, uh... I mean, it's, there's a lot of wetland there, it doesn't look like it would be advantageous to go back there.
And it gets to the same as J P said, where the property owner, in this case Gene Dullard, wants to put solar panels there, and he's using up the whole lot.
Pretty much.
He, he really doesn't care about if you got soybeans to the east of it. And David can't get his big combine down there. Can't get that big combine down there.
Three of them. It's huge, Gene Dullard don't care. He'll read them way, he'll care for it. They need red, green laces.
Probably think some guy, you know, doing hay. Baling hay or something in there, you know, if you got forty, fifty foot wide lane, you got all the room in the world. You gotta get your stuff in fast. That's why they should be putting these solar arrays right down through the thruway. You got the median in the thruway, isn't it? There's large areas.
There'd be a glare issue there.
Lots of wind.
Yeah, I get it with...
Lots of sun.
You could definitely get glare off a fixed unit onto, uh, R eighteen from this site. If it's, depending what time of year it is, that's why...
Funny thing, you say acceptable glare, it's like, it's not, it's not like a direct reflection, but it's still bright. You know what I mean?
They're absorbing light.
That's why, yeah, that's why, yes, probably the world.
Oh, yeah, I've seen, I've seen...
Is it glare?
Oh, there, there's a light, I mean, it's, it's just, it's pretty, right, it's white, it's like a sheet of paper.
Yep.
It's on, uh, on the, what, Manito?
There's Manito, there's two, there's one on Whittier, there's the other one on Roosevelt out there ways south.
Yep.
I will say...
We'll drive by it, I, I personally think they look horrible, but that's...
If you go to Hill Press Drive, certain time of the day, the glare from Roosevelt Highway solar panels are bad. Yep, I go to my side, what, what does it say, what's it flare? He goes, my, my, your solar panel. Oh, yeah, yours. And they called it maybe, I said, it's my phone, yeah. But anyway, I think you get glare off of what, any solar panel, if you're in the right, near the right time of day.
Next week, the fourteenth, we have a L W R P public information. It's going to be...
Fifteen, I think.
Fifteen, I think.
Oh, I'm looking at that. Training him.
Fifteen, five to six.
So we got it, it's over.
Oh, yeah, you're going to go out?
No, no.
So if anyone wants to come, uh, you know, any local representative, representatives, or state that you know, want to try to get in to see some of the information that we're going to have, we've got four or five tables set up.
Ten tables.
Hmm?
Ten.
Ten? We got ten projects that are only going to be depicted in a, well, in a real world, maybe, maybe not. No Ferris wheels right now, I guess. I've never seen them. But, uh, there'll be a lot of information, we're moving right along with the process, so...
I've seen it.
They're bright. Okay. Make a note, George. Gene, do you have anything?
I was just going to catch up on that, Cheryl. Jack, on August twenty-seventh, there was a webinar that the I J C Great Lakes Water Level Boards had, a one hour session. And Cheryl was going to check in, maybe with the town board, to see anybody who attended that webinar, or there's all, you could also still attend it, because it, it's still, um, available to, to view, if you get credit for it, if you're new to it. Yeah, we need until next Monday to bring it up to the town board.
I'd be interested.
It's an hour. It is.
It's passed, but it's still...
If it's passed, I'll send it to you. I'll send it on the twenty-seventh. I J C Water Levels.
I don't need it, I don't need a time, yeah.
Okay, I will send it.
J P, how's the solar life?
We're running, it's, it's approvals from the agencies, it's still been, a real struggle. Yeah, we, the, uh, Parks Department called us the other day for a conference call, and said that there's a portion of, uh... On one of the streets, I think at the end, a new code that was never dedicated to the town, but it's never been surrendered from the state, and they want to give it to the town, so we're in a process of, of working on it.
They're going to abandon it?
Working about the abandonment.
Does legislature have to vote on that?
Yeah, but they said they will give us a, a license agreement to do the construction and follow up later with the actual documentation. We're, I mean, we haven't made a change in our engineering or design in months and months and months, and we're just waiting for all this, all these...
Couple of young individuals. Couple of young individuals down off of Uco Drive, digging alongside the edge of the road, he said they were looking for archaeological.
Yeah, the archaeology study got delayed as well, because the state said a portion of this is under the jurisdiction of, normally it's under the jurisdiction of Historic Preservation Office, and so this piece has to go get clearance from the Department of State. So it took, that, that's been delayed. It's just all, all the possible.
Yeah, it was kind of funny, because I sat and talked to him, and I said, you know, guys, when the Parkway was built, this road on Uco Drive was built, this was all swampland, it would be about six, seven foot down from where you get the native soil, you know, and you only got a shovel.
Yeah, well, that's how they make you tough.
Yeah, they still don't, it's something, un disturbed.
Yeah, yeah, so it, it's coming along, I hope to get the approvals any time else we can do it. It's been very frustrating, all the agencies, no agency wants to make a decision until this other one.
Yes.
Frustrating.
The Empire State.
Welcome to New York City.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Aye, and Doug, Steve, all in hard aye.